Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting Tuesday, August 8th, 2023 in the McKinnon Hall. We're calling the meeting to order at exactly 7:00. Plagiarians to the flag.
Plagiarians to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Martina Shea.
Present.
Erin DeMello. Present. Andrew Murch.
Excused.
Catherine LaPiori.
Present.
Frank Kibinsky.
Present.
John Shaw.
Present.
Carla de la Cruz Davila.
Present.
Okay. We don't have a printout of the minutes. We'll do them next meeting. Next meeting, Dr. Villar will be with us, and usually when he's with us, we have the full, all of the minutes. Everything is, his team helps us and get it all together. So we will do the minutes of the July minutes, we will approve the July minutes at the next meeting. Okay? Citizens Forum. For those of you who are new, you're free to come up. Just tell us who you are, your name, your address, and whatever comments you would like to make.
Is that now? I'll bring it back. Okay. Good evening. My name is Jessica DeChico. I live at 83 Elm Street in Southbridge. This is my first time speaking, so please excuse me. My son, his name is Sebastian. He is four years old. He had a stroke when he was born. He has cerebral palsy. He has epilepsy, global developmental delay. He also has severe food allergies, like if you touch him, after you had milk or egg, he will go into anaphylactic shock. Just want to say that. Moving forward, he is now getting into kindergarten, which I am very excited about. We have not had good at all at school since we started, and I'm not happy about it. I'm actually extremely nervous to send him to kindergarten. I'm afraid every time the nurse called, that I'm getting that phone call. That phone call that my son is in the hospital, that phone call that someone gave him something he wasn't supposed to. And let me explain to you why. So I've had not a good time since we started school. I feel like my words and expressions that I'm trying to make sure my son is safe in school is not happening. I have talked to a couple different people about it. I don't want to name names unless it's okay if I name names, but there's just one person in particular. And I feel like every time I have an issue, they're trying to tell me what's wrong with my son, like they're with him all day. One person during a meeting one time, when my son was left in a diaper all day during his first time, first day at the summer program, he cannot change his diaper himself. He does not use his right arm. So he was in a diaper from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM. And I was told that that was a learning experience for the entire staff to do better. My son is not here for a learning experience. He is here to make sure that he is safe in school, and I do not feel like he's safe. I have voiced my opinion multiple times. I feel like no one's listening to me. I had to hire an advocate. I'm a stay-at-home mom, do not have money for this advocate, but she has tremendously helped me. My son also is considered legally blind. Everyone at the school seems to think my son is this perfect, like, child who has nothing wrong with him, which I wish he was, but he's not. I know for a fact he's not. They think he can do all of these things that he cannot do. They're trying to stop his OT, his PT, his vision services for a child who had a stroke when he was born, which makes no sense to me. How can someone just tell me that these things are getting taken away from him when I'm with him all day and I know that he needs these things? He doesn't use his right arm at all. He's legally blind. So I'm getting really irritated and upset that no one at the school is helping me through any of these things. I feel like they're going off of what they think they want to do because they don't want to do their job. For instance, my son has severe food allergies, like I already mentioned. Valentine's Day, I ask over and over again, what are we doing for Valentine's Day? Oh, we're just passing out papers. Okay, cool. That's it? Nothing else? No. My son gets on the bus. He takes the bus. That also was not going to be allowed. I had to fight for him to take the bus. And he comes home, he opens his backpack, and he starts opening up all of these candies on the floor. There's chocolate, there's peanut butter, and I'm like, what are you doing? So now I had to take the candy away from him, and he's crying and screaming and not understanding why. So now I call the principal to find out what happened. Then she brings me to the teacher who said, oh, I just put in his backpack. I figured you'd grab it. No, you told me you weren't doing that. You put chocolate in a kid's backpack that's anaphylactic to milk and egg. Like, what would have happened if he opened that on the bus? I'll tell you what would have happened. He would have went into anaphylactic shock, and nobody on that bus has an EpiPen for my son, which means he probably would not have been here right now. So I am scared to send him to kindergarten. I need an allergy plan in place. I need not just peanut-free facility, because in Burlington, Massachusetts, the top eight allergens are not allowed in the classroom at all. And it's easy. Make a sun butter sandwich, make something that doesn't have milk in it. Why is the allergy plan only dedicated to just peanut? Why can't it be the top eight allergens to make sure everyone's safe? Because technically, the first time a kid goes into anaphylactic shock is at school. And I've already had issues. Plus, my son is not allowed to do some activities because the teachers are too lazy to check if the arts and crafts have milk or egg in it. The nurse doesn't check. I get a phone call or a picture sent to me. Can Sebastian do this? It's easy. Call the company and find out. I will do it because I want to make sure he can participate, but why do I have to keep doing their job? That's annoying to me. I don't want to do that. So going forward in kindergarten, I'm hoping that somehow someone can put in an allergy in place, like a plan. Maybe we can do the top eight allergens, because it's not just peanuts people are allergic to. It's milk, egg, everything you could think of. So I think moving forward, that needs to be in place. On top of that, I don't think teachers need to tell parents what is the right thing to do for their child that has a disability. When I'm with my son all day, they try to tell me that he can do something when I know he can't do those things. He can pull up both his pants. No, he can't. He doesn't use his right arm, because all summer, I've been trying to party train him, and he cannot pull up his pants whatsoever. That arm does not move. You might know my son. He was on the Southbridge Police Station forum for May Pediatric Stroke Awareness Month. They took a picture of him and uploaded it and put it on their site. I'm a pretty big advocate for my son with pediatric stroke, because nobody knows that kids have strokes when they're born. So I think something needs to be done on how teachers approach kids with disabilities in school, because me, as a first-time mom and first-time bringing my child in there, I am not comfortable. I do not like the way the school's run. I do not like the person who's head of having to deal with anything. Her name is Karen, and I don't like it. I don't like it. She's the one that told me that my son's a learning experience, and nobody who's there to protect our children and make sure they're safe should tell a mother that, that my child is a learning experience. For the school to do better, that's not okay. That's all I have to say for today. Goodbye.
Thank you very much. We have heard other people are having issues. In fact, one of the things on our agenda tonight, we'll be talking about forming a CPAC. For those of you out there in TV land, it is a parents' group for children with special needs. Every school district is supposed to have one, but if no parents are willing to start it, no school committee members are willing to start it, I know for a fact that that particular issue has changed. So the first thing, Dr. Villar does listen to these. We will notify him tomorrow morning, and all I can say is I'm sorry. I hope we do better.
I hope we do because I'm happy that we are going to school and I'm learning here. I'm hoping I can learn this.
Anybody else who wishes to address the committee? You can name an address.
Hi, I'm Leslie. I live at 81 Cliff Street in Southbridge. I actually have five kids that go to Southbridge Schools. My oldest just graduated last year, so we'll start with him. One of the things that bothered me about his graduation experience, number one, there was no classrooms offered. Number two, he didn't receive his yearbook until after graduation. So he didn't have, like, the experience of having his classmates sign his yearbook. Then let's go to my other son. His name's Mateo. He has issues in school. He's kind of like, gets in trouble a lot. And so there was an incident in the school with one of his teachers, and he was called stupid by one of the teachers in his class, in front of everybody. I addressed it, and there were other incidents after that with this same teacher. I asked multiple times for him to be pulled out of the class and put into another class because they had mediation after mediation. They weren't getting along at all. There was, they couldn't switch him from the class because she was the only teacher that taught that subject. Then he ended up failing that class and having to go to summer school for that class. And last I heard, there was a great possibility that he was going to fail that class because there was issues with her in summer school also. But I didn't find that out until probably about a week before he was done with the summer school. And they refused to let him do any of the work at home on his Chromebook, which, if you're not going to fix the problem with him and the teacher, which it obviously wasn't fixable, at least give him another path towards success. That same son, I go to meetings for him sometimes before the school year so that we can have a plan in place for him. Every year, I hear the same thing. It's going to be different this year. Never is. Rules are going to be different. We all got sent an email about the dress code. It's the same dress code it's always been. It's just never enforced. Let's see, what else? My other son, he's a junior now, but when he went to Charlton Street, there was an incident with him and another kid on the bus where, if you knew my son Malachi, that he's not a bad kid at all. He's very likable, very lovable. The principal at Charlton Street at the time threatened to call the police on him, told me that the police would be coming to my house, and threatened to call social services on me. Said she did, actually. Neither thing, I didn't have social service come to my house, never had a police officer come to my house. So to make idle threats to a parent because you don't like my son is ridiculous to me. There's so much. They're not following my son Mateo's IEP plan. He's supposed to have breaks when he starts to get frustrated because he has anger issues. He's not given them. There's trouble with my daughter who goes to middle school. Last year, she was getting in trouble a few times. She was in drama and got kicked out of drama because of her behavior, and instead of calling me to make me aware of the behavior before it got to that point where she got kicked out of drama, they literally gave me a phone call, your daughter's getting kicked out of drama, which was not fair to her or everybody else who was doing drama, because if they told me beforehand, I would have been able to redirect my daughter into better behavior. And if you call the school and ask them, any teacher who calls me, I answer first time. There's no, you have to call me back. There's no going to voicemail. If you tell me to come to a meeting, I'm there. So it's not from a lack of response from me. So I mean, things like this need to be addressed, because I'm sure I'm not the only parent going through these things. So, and I mean, it'd be great if Dr. Villar was actually here for the meeting, because I've seen a couple of meetings. I've been to meetings before. He's never here, and when he is here, he does not engage with parents. So I mean, how are we supposed to put our faith in somebody who we don't even know? I don't know him. I don't know what his plan is. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Again, we will bring these issues to Dr. Villar. As you said, he is the administrator. He will be here in the September meeting. And again, we will have Citizens Forum. Do we have anyone else we'd like to?
My name is Stevie Ramsey. I live at 40 Stony Brook Drive, and tonight I have written out something for you guys. I currently have a two-year-old son. He's about to start in our district, August 30th, at our past program for children's disability. Some of you may know me from Facebook, and some of you may not, but either way, tonight I'm here in hopes to make a change for the better of our school. I have continued a tremendous advocacy with Carla and much more of our board for the last two months. In the two months, I have as well been setting up an IEP for my two-year-old son that has gone almost nowhere. This district is insulting to a majority of our parents. This is not a district you should be sitting here proud of in the moment. You're a district filled of children of all races, ethnicities, and disabilities, and the school takes us as a joke. Karen, our special education director at Colab, I believe the majority can raise their hands if she needs to go. Parents are continually ignored, pushed off, spoken over, and bullied by her if we were the children. I refuse to be belittled and have my child be bullied behind my back. As well as Jeffrey Villar, I have emailed him. I did speak about these concerns of Karen with him, and he as well pushed me off back to Karen, who told him that our problem was handled when it wasn't out. I have not heard from either of them since. Six weeks later, I have now had to call the Board of Education to get anywhere. I do not feel parents should have to do that or threaten lawyers or get advocates. I, as well as Jessica, just spent $180 to get our school district to meet my son's needs, and that is not fair. We don't have the money. We are a low-income society over here. There is no reason when your district is helping children with disability, wrong names should be on IEPs or unachievable goals for the individual children. I had no explanation of why the wrong name was put on my son's IEP, or if somebody else has been given his information, and I still don't have an IEP two months later. I should not hear from parents that our lockdowns are not being followed directly and/or taken seriously. Why was it last year before the end of the year, we had a gun incident that was ignored? I refuse to send my two-year-old to an unsafe place or a potential deathbed because the school takes us as a joke or it's too much work for them. Why is our district not have advocacy for free? Why is nobody here in our times of need? Seriously, to keep our district running and made to be a priority, things need to change in now. Most parents are school choice and their kids out of Southbridge to run from what's happening here. Sooner or later, nobody will come here because of the bad reputation our district has and the lack of acceptance and accountability. So please consider my points tonight before we lose everything we have built. Thank you for your time.
Again, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the program for two-year-olds. Could you get the microphone and just tell me a little bit about it, because I know nothing about that.
So my son has severe autism. He is actually in our early intervention program for the town, and he will be three on August 20th. He'll be going into our school year, newly three.
Okay, so he will be in, he's been in another program, and now at three, he comes into the public school system.
Yes.
Okay, and have you met any of the teachers that he'll be having, or?
I met his speech therapist, his occupational therapist, and Jennifer Cowles, but that has been it so far.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Would that be under the preschool? And does that come under our purview, or do we start? I thought we started with Eastford Road.
That Eastford Road is the preschool.
Starts at three? Okay.
But it must start at three, because I truly, I did not know.
So what happened was, he is supposed to be at Eastford Road, but because of the autism program, they're moving it to Charlton Street, due into the locker room.
Yeah, very often, they do that when they have just one class of some, a special need, that they'll put them in the best facility for that.
It'll be four kids to six teachers.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have any other people who would like to address the school committee? Counselor?
Good evening. Mike Marquetti, 120 Marie Avenue. I'm also a member of the Southbridge Town Council. At the last meeting that I attended, I brought up a couple of issues that I had with your agenda. Number one, you had a note at the bottom of the page instructing people on what they couldn't talk about, and I see that you've removed that, which I'm happy to see that that has been removed since, according to the state Supreme Court, it's illegal to tell people what they can and cannot say at Citizens Forum.
Thank you for giving us that information.
The other issue that I had was the return of Members Forum. I mean, I've heard residents come up here tonight, and they have some legitimate concerns, but it seems to me they have more rights than even the citizens, the members of this committee who aren't even allowed to talk about anything. So I was just wondering where that stands.
We, as I said last time, we have been instructed not to have Citizens Forum, and at this point, we will not be reinstituting it. But I do agree with you that each one of our counselors, one of our schools, each one of our school committee members should have a chance to speak to every issue.
Well, is it Dr. Villar that tells you you cannot have Members Forum?
No, actually, it was our association, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, who strongly advised us that there have been legal issues in other districts, and we've taken their advice.
Is Massachusetts Association, is that a, is that an authoritative group? I mean, do they have a right to make laws and?
No, no, it's just their, it's just their advice.
Create procedures? It's just an association, correct?
It's just their.
So it's not really a, it's not a part of the state government, right? So I don't know how they can tell you not to have Members Forum. I also noticed that Dr. Villar is not here tonight. He wasn't here at the last meeting. So it seems to me, if he's not going to show up, then you should be able to do what you want with your committee and have a Members Forum. I certainly wouldn't listen to an association that has no authority to tell you how to run your meetings, really. They really don't. The other issue, so I would, I would like to see you put Members Forum back on your agenda. Let these members speak. They have less rights than the citizens even, and they volunteered to be on this committee. And these are legitimate concerns, and if you don't have a right to talk about it, who's going to talk about it? Who's going to advocate for them? The other thing that I heard you say something about, you were going to talk about having a family committee or something to study the second, the first person's concerns, but I don't see that on the agenda tonight. And really, what you should do, you should not be vague on this agenda. If you have something like that you want to talk about, you should include it on the agenda. I have no problem with you talking about it tonight, because I think it's very important. I just think you should include things like that on here.
Dr. Villar, one of the things on the agenda is the receivers' announcements. He gave us some announcements to share. One of them is that.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Am I wrong in misunderstanding our ability to speak? It's not a restriction on speaking, period. It's a restriction on the order and the discipline of speaking. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, so that's not what I'm hearing from the town counselor. Sounds like it's more straightforward. We don't have the right to speak. I don't, that sounds like a conflict. We already don't understand the problem.
Town Council has on their agenda every night, and we used to, a thing called Citizens, excuse me, Members Forum. Under the Members Forum, this time of the year, every year, I would look at the camera and say to the kids, get your summer reading done. This is a good book we have this year, and I have to admit, I have not been, I've not been caught up. I will be caught up by the next meeting. I would always say something like that. Other people would bring up thorny issues, and that we were not, that neither Dr. Villar nor we were ready to discuss it that time, because we didn't know about it. It would be like these parents. We expect them to bring us difficult issues, and we then bring them to Dr. Villar. So some towns apparently had gotten in a lot of trouble with, I'm going to guess, and this is just a guess, that they were using it as a forum to talk about people and things that should not have been talked about publicly.
Sure.
So they've advised us. I still would like to have it back.
Again, that's a piece of advice given. I don't think anyone mentioned anything about them being a legislative body or telling us what to do. So I'm not sure how you came to those conclusions, or who gave you the information, but it's wrong.
And if we would like to say anything, we can always put an item on the agenda. So that's kind of our opportunity, is to think ahead of time and try to put something on the agenda.
All right. Thank you very much. To address his question, I didn't accuse anybody of anything. I asked you, is this an administrative committee? You said they are not, and that's all that was asked.
You said, you said they don't have the right to tell us what to do. No one here said that. Why did you, why was that a question even?
I asked, are they an authoritative group?
Right.
She said no.
Correct.
And this is, I mean, to tell you the truth, this is the first time I've even heard you speak. So clearly, this, this.
What does that have to do with anything?
He's not going to let me speak, then I'm just not going to.
Go ahead, sorry.
I asked her, who decided not to put this Members Forum on the agenda? She said this association, mass association.
Yep.
I pointed out that they do not have the authority to tell you not to put that on the agenda. That's all that was said. Thank you.
Great. You said that last month, too.
Yep. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the committee? Counselor?
Hello, Jasmine Rivas, 40 Rogers Street. I just wanted to kind of announce and invite folks that are here to our Education and Human Services Subcommittee meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 in the Veterans Room downstairs. I am the new chair of the EHS Subcommittee. We will have an agenda item on the agenda in regards to the turnaround plan and the quarterly report from June 2023, really just giving people an opportunity to come and talk about or ask questions. And we really want to educate the community about the turnaround plan and the update to the turnaround plan. So again, I spoke, I've spoken to your chair and let her know that we will have this item on the agenda at a future EHS meeting. We've invited Dr. Villar, who will come after he comes to your meeting in September. And again, we are just collecting information, educating the public on the updated turnaround plan. We talk about all of these items very often, but sometimes our residents don't understand what's in that plan. So it is really important for me to educate our community on the updates that have been done to the plan and on the quarterly report. So I welcome and invite everyone to be there, if you're able to, and let others know as well. Thank you.
The turnaround plan and the quarterly reports are on the school website under Superintendent's Documents. They're all there to be read freely. I want to thank the Town Council for opening this time for us. I did talk to Dr. Villar. He said that he was coming to our meeting in September to give us the report on the end of school and the beginning of the school year, and that he'd rather talk to them after he's spoken to us. I'm sorry, you have a question? You have to do the name and address thing.
Again, my name is Jessica DeChico. I live at 83 Elm Street in Southbridge.
I live at 83 Elm Street in Southbridge. I actually forgot to mention something very important, which obviously I'm nervous. So like I said about my son having cerebral palsy, I was told from the school that I have to dress him a certain way. He also wasn't able to attend any of the holiday things where the kids were allowed to come in pajamas or dress up or wear anything because it was too difficult for the teacher to help him with his needs, either the bathroom or the toilet. So during pajama day, my son had to wear his extra clothes that were in his bag. They got taken off, and he got sent home in his extra clothes in case it gets wet. Also, again, like I said, my son has cerebral palsy, so he does not use the right side of his arm. There has been, I want to say, five times a month where he gets sent outside or off of the bus with his arm in his jacket or in his sweatshirt, meaning that his arm is not out his shirt, like my arm is right here. His arm is all the way in his shirt and his jacket or sweatshirt if he has something on. And his arm is either stuck inside his backpack or on like the little strap area, which is a 100% safety hazard. So I would also like someone to try to get people to learn how to dress children with disabilities properly. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. The next is the receivers' announcement. Because he gave us such a, an extensive announcement, I've split it up so that each of our members can, can speak so it won't just sound like me all day. First person is, who's got number one on there?
Is this a one or?
Number one, yep.
Scratching. Okay, the district had a very successful 21st century summer school program for grades K through eight. 226 participated. Students engaged in activities that were both academic and enrichment. A vendor, Mobile Ed Productions, provided the following activities at each of the elementary schools. Forces in Motion, Earth Dome, Freedom Within, Magic of Science, Sky Dome. Students also participated in a foam pit and a sports day. Academics centered on skill review in math and reading, use of iReady, and lessons on space, gravity, and energy, and social, emotional learning about positive life choices based on Second Step SEL framework. The middle school program provided 103 students with, broken down as grades five and six, rising fifth graders, were invited to attend the MS program, the short stories unit, and the space unit, grades seven and eight, understanding Southbridge through geography unit, and the contemporary social issues unit. Mobile Ed Productions, Young Authors Day, and Spirit to Overcome. We also had 25 student interns from SHS who worked across the elementary program as paid interns. The high school ran a summer credit recovery program. Approximately 70 students participated.
As of today, both the high school and the middle school are fully staffed. We have approximately 12 openings in elementary schools. We continue to post many positions to be prepared for potential last-minute resignations. We are looking for four elementary classroom teachers. This week, the administrative team is meeting for professional development and planning. Next week is the beginning of new teacher orientation, followed by all staff returning on August 18th through 24th for professional development prior to the start of school.
The elementary school open house schedule. Eastford Road School is August 23rd from 5 to 6:30. Charlton Street School, August 22nd from 4:30 to 6:30. West Street School, August 22nd from 5 to 6:30. Southbridge Middle School, September 12th. And that time is to be determined later. Southbridge High School is September 19th, and that time again will be determined. Southbridge Academy, September 21st, and the time will be determined later. The first day of school for grades one through 12 is August 28th. The first day of kindergarten is August 29th. And the first day for preschool or pre-K is August 30th.
The really important date is August 28th, the start of another school year. Kathy has something she'd like to share?
Right, there is a back-to-school shoe event scheduled for August 11th. Have a Soul is working with the principal of the high school and the middle school. A flyer was sent home earlier in the summer, and participants have been identified. And I want to bring up the name of Mila Forz, who is a young lady who has donated many pairs of shoes, and I thought she should be recognized.
Carla?
Okay, the Special Education Advisory Group, which is CPAC, please consider this an open invitation to join our Southbridge Public Schools Special Education Parent Guardian Advisory Council. CPACs are typically comprised of parent and guardian volunteers. They are intended to be a place of support for parents and/or guardians of children who receive any type of special education services or accommodations in the school, such as an individualized educational program or IEP or an out-of-district placement. If you would like to learn more, you can call the Office of Student Services at 508-764-5414, extension 415. Okay. Spanish.
Thank you for the Spanish. Especially thank you.
Considere esto como una invitación abierta para unirse a nuestro consejo asesorio de padres de educación especial de las escuelas públicas de Southbridge. Los CPACs generalmente están compuestos por padres tutores, tutores? I'm Spanglish, y'all, so. Voluntarios.
We need help.
Tienen la intención de ser un lugar de apoyo para los padres de los niños que reciben cualquier tipo de servicios de educación especial o adaptaciones en la escuela como un programa de educación individualizado. Quieren saber más, llame la oficina de servicios de los estudiantes al 508-764-5414, extension 415. Madam Chair, can I say something?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to Stevie Lynn that was just here, Jessica that was just here, and thank you to Leslie for coming up. I know it's hard to do that, and I just want to thank you for your time and everybody else that's here too tonight. I hope this continues and we still continue getting a crowd because your voices do matter. And the only way we could accomplish anything is by hearing your stories so that way we're able to do something. And I just want to point out that we have ASPIDA representation here, which is a great organization that hopefully we could work with in the future as well. And I also wanted to let everyone know of the class of 2023, the senior standoff. They're doing it at the Southbridge Community Center at 153 Chestnut Street between 2:00 and 5:00 PM. Yaliza, that was here last time, invited everyone. So I just wanted to send out a reminder because that is coming up soon. And I think our students deserve for all of us to be there and to wish them well on their, all their futures, and hopefully we are able to do better because we deserve better and so do our children.
Did you mention a date? I heard a time.
Did I mention? Yeah. It's August 13th from 2:00 to 5:00.
One of the things that was mentioned earlier was that the kids got their yearbooks late. Having been a yearbook advisor, I realize that is very often the most horrible problem that a yearbook advisor has. But they're suggesting that all of you bring your yearbooks, so you get them signed, have that time together, the time to share, say hello and say goodbye. It'll be a precious memory. Don't forget the Town Council meeting tomorrow. Does anybody else on the committee have anything that? Next meeting date is September 12th at 7:00. Dr. Villar will be here, and we will have a presentation, but that does not preclude having a Citizens Forum. We adjourn the meeting at 7:40.